Yes, Mayor. Commissioner Berkowitz asked me to pass along that adds everyone to aware. He has suffered a serious injury over the weekend and has been advised by his doctors to stay off his feet. So he will not be able to attend tonight's meeting. And he's asking that the record be recorded to reflect his excused absence from tonight's meeting. He actually asked me to pass along this.
I can see what you're saying.
Let's just call these in order and we'll have this roll call by.
Commissioner Osborne.
Here.
Commissioner Marion.
Here.
Commissioner Naughton.
Here.
Mayor Fisher.
Here.
And of course Charlie Notton, our president, and Calvin von Brüger.
Here.
Chief Peterson.
Here.
That's the record for Ms. Flack, that everyone except Charlie Berkowitz is here.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and with liberty and justice for all.
So we have two sets of minutes here. The meetings of November the thirteenth. Do I have approval, a motion for approval of the minutes?
I want to mention that the minutes of the November thirteenth, 2012, and November twenty-seventh, 2012, can be moved through, please.
Second.
Move the second and the minute, both minutes, November the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh, be approved. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. The next item is ordinances for revolutions. I believe that Mr. Marion wants to make a presentation, so...
Bud, if you wouldn't mind joining me up here?
Well, forgot to have the moment of silence.
Want to ask before I can?
We would like to present you with this proclamation. And it says, "Whereas the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun acknowledge Mr. Bud McFadden in his retirement from his business formerly to the Rising Sun Parts Plus and presently known as the Rising Sun Home and Auto, and whereas acknowledges that he has been a part of this community for over fifty years as owner of the Rising Sun Parts Plus, offering such items as vehicle parts, tools, appliances, electronics, furniture, and whereas recognizes his community involvement, his generous contributions, and his leadership to the town of Rising Sun, and whereas acknowledges his active membership as a member of the Rising Sun Lions Club, and whereas he has served in the community well, and may God bless as he continues his journey into retirement." And now therefore on behalf of the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun, Mayor Fisher, Commissioners Osborne, Marion, Berkowitz, and Naughton, do here pride proclaim December the twelfth as Bud McFadden Day. And we call upon all our citizens to celebrate the significant positive impact that Bud McFadden has had on all of us. And witness therefore and on behalf of the Board of Commissioners of the town of Rising Sun, I have, I here to set my hand on this eleventh day of December 2012.[290.12][290.12](Applause).
It's quite a play here. I really appreciate this for all the, from all the commissioners. And it doesn't seem like fifty years, let me tell you. But it's been a great ride and I appreciate all the business that I've received from this town and the neighboring communities, and I thank you very much.
We have something else to present you, Bud. This is a key to the town of Rising Sun, and I'm going to read a little bit of something. Do you want to put that in? Okay. It says, "Above and beyond the proclamation honoring Bud McFadden, I would like to elaborate on exactly what Bud McFadden means to the town of Rising Sun. Bud has been a staple of this community for many generations. For some families starting out Bud stores where they purchased their first washer and dryer and refrigerator for their new home. Bud store provided service for their lawn sowers, kept their cars running, and was there when a pipe broke in the house. And a quick trip to the hardware store was needed to buy that special item to bring life back to normal. Generations of families visited the store talking about community events, shared family stories, and were made to feel like Bud's family. Bud served on numerous community organizations and was a key figure in the Lions Post and the Greater Rising Sun Chamber of Commerce, helping to provide economic opportunities and networking to small businesses. He helped develop the annual, the first annual Sun Fest event in town, served on town economic development committees, and donated countless hours of time and money to our community events aimed at helping the community that he loved. Bud McFadden's presence will always be felt in this community. His legacy will be remembered and his contributions to the town of Rising Sun will live on for many decades." And I just wanted to add on a personal note, my grandparents bought their first washer and dryer in 1964 from your dad, and they've been taking it pretty hard there. Your store is closing. You mean a lot to me and a lot to people in this community, and I wish you well on your journey. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[428.84][428.84](Applause). Well, Mr. Marion wants to have a moment of silence.
Let us have a moment of silence in memory of all those people that have lost a loved one within the last year. I know this is our last meeting for the year 2012, so let us have a moment of silence for those people that have lost loved ones in the last year. Thank you.
Now we have Resolution 2012-13, Charter Amendment. And who's going to be the presenter?
I'm going to be the presenter on this. As, as a result of, um, hmm, happenings in the community. The commissioners have, are putting forth this resolution. Town of Rising Sun Resolution 2012-13 Charter Amendment, Citizen Recall Provisions. Resolution of the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun, adopted pursuant to the authority of Section 3 and 4 entitled Town Rule of Article 11-E entitled Municipal Corporations of the Constitution of Maryland and Section 11 at sequel under subtitled Charter Amendments of Article 23A entitled Corporations Municipal of the Annated Code of Maryland, to amend the charter of the town of Rising Sun, Maryland, with a provision to address amendments to the town charter to provide for the recall of elected officials by the citizens of Rising Sun, Maryland. Section 1, whereas it is hereby found and determined to be in the best interests of the town to amend the charter of the town to provide for certain criteria and procedures in order to provide the citizens of the town of Rising Sun with the ability to recall and remove an elected official from office. Section 2, be it resolved by the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun, Maryland, that Section C-8 of the Charter of the town of Rising Sun, Maryland, is hereby amended by adding a new subdivision D, to read as follows. D, cause for recall. Any elected official of the town of Rising Sun who has been censured by an act of the mayor and board of commissioners may be petitioned for recall and removed from office by the qualified voters of the town in accordance with the following provisions. One, recall petition. A, no recall petition shall be filed against any person until that person shall have been in office for at least three months, nor shall any recall petition address more than one elected official. B, a recall petition shall set forth the act of censure taken by the mayor and commissioner to be signed by not less than twenty percent of the qualified registered voters of the town and request a recall election be held for said office holder. C, the petition shall be addressed to the mayor and commissioners of Rising Sun and filed with the town clerk. D, upon receiving a recall petition, the town clerk shall immediately notify the mayor and commissioners of Rising Sun that a recall petition has been filed. Within fifteen days of the filing of the recall petition, the clerk shall ascertain whether the recall petition is signed by the requisite number of qualified registered voters of the town and shall attach a dated certificate stating the results of the examination and whether the recall petition meets the requirements of this section. This certification shall be forwarded to the mayor and commissioners of Rising Sun. D1, if the certificate shows the recall petition does not meet the requirements of this section, the clerk shall send written notice of this fact to the individual who filed the recall petition. D2, if the certificate shows the recall petition meets the requirements of this section, the matter shall be placed on the agenda for action by the mayor and commissioners at the next regularly scheduled meeting, if such a meeting is scheduled to occur within fifteen days of the date of certification. If the next regularly scheduled meeting is scheduled for sixteen or more days from the date of certification, a special meeting shall be scheduled within fifteen days of the date of certification to take action on the recall petition. Two, recall election and public hearing date. A, at the meeting described in paragraph 4B above, the mayor and commissioners shall by resolution passed as in its normal legislative procedure, take action to order a recall election to be held and set a date for the recall election which is not less than thirty days and not more than sixty days from the date of the certification unless, A1, the elected official who is the subject of the recall petition has resigned, or, A2, the regular town election is scheduled to occur within sixty days of the certification date, in which case the mayor and commissioners may vote to order the recall election to be included on the general election ballot. B, at the meeting described in paragraph 1D2, the mayor and commissioners shall schedule a public hearing to take place no later than fourteen days prior to the recall election, at which time the persons petitioning for recall, those opposed to recall, and the elected official who is the subject of the recall petition may have an opportunity to speak on the matter. C, the mayor and commissioners shall cause to be posted public notice of the recall election date and public hearing outlined in paragraph 2B. Said notice shall be posted at town hall and advertised in a newspaper of general circulation in the town of Rising Sun. The mayor and commissioners may undertake any such further measures to notify the town residents of the recall election and public hearing as they may deem appropriate. Three, recall election. A, the recall election shall be conducted in all respects not otherwise addressed by this section as other town elections. A1, campaigning and politicking shall be prohibited in the public way within three hundred feet of the polling location. No one shall impede the orderly passage of voters to and from the polling location. A2, those in favor of the recall of the individual elected official and those opposed to the recall of the individual elected official shall have the right to have one poll watcher in the polling room. The poll watcher shall not be an elected official or individual subject to the recall vote. Poll watchers shall register with the town election board and shall not interfere with or interact with the election judges, staff, or voters other than to ask procedural questions. B, the elected official whose recall is sought shall continue to serve in office pending the results of the recall election, but shall not participate in any discussions or actions related to the recall. C, the recall ballot shall read, shall, name of official, continue in the office of, office name, of Rising Sun. Following this question shall be the words yes and no, which the voter shall use to vote for or against recall. The question of recall shall be decided by a simple majority of the votes cast. D, results of the election. The question of recall shall be decided by a simple majority of votes cast. If a majority of votes cast is in favor of recall, the elected official's term of office shall immediately terminate upon the certification of the election. If the majority of votes cast are not in favor of recall, the elected official's term shall continue unaffected. E, the successor of any elected official removed by recall shall be selected as provided by this charter. A person so recalled from office shall not be appointed to fill the vacancy so created. Section 3, and be it further resolved by the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun, Maryland, that this amendment to the charter shall in all respects be effective and observed as such upon the fiftieth day after the date of adoption unless on or before the fortieth day thereafter, there shall be presented to the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun or mailed to it, a petition for referendum in accordance with the provisions of Section 13G of Article 23A of the Annated Code of Maryland. Section 4, and be it further resolved by the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun, Maryland, that a complete and exact copy of this resolution shall be posted in the municipal offices of the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun, Maryland, or some public place where at the period of at least forty days following its adoption, and further, that a fair summary of this proposed amendment shall be published in a newspaper of general circulation in the town of Rising Sun for not less than four times at weekly intervals within a period of forty days from the adoption of this resolution. Section 5, and be it further resolved by the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun, Maryland, that as soon as the charter amendment hereby adopted shall become effective, the clerk of the town of Rising Sun shall send separately by registered mail to the Department of Legislative Reference the following information concerning the charter. One, a complete copy of this resolution. Two, the date of the referendum election, if any, held with respect thereto. Three, the number of votes cast for or against the resolution, whether by the commissioners of Rising Sun or in a referendum. And four, the effective date of the charter. Section 6, be it further resolved by the commissioner, mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun, Maryland, that the clerk of the town of Rising Sun be and is specifically authorized and instructed to carry out the provisions of Section 4 and 5 hereof, and is that evidence of compliance herewith, the clerk shall cause to be affixed to the minutes of the meeting in which this charter shall have been adopted. One, appropriate certification and publication of the newspaper in which the summary of the proposed amendment shall have been published. Two, the return receipts of the mailing referred to in Section 5, read and introduced by the commissioners of Rising Sun, Maryland, this eleventh day of December 2012. Passed and adopted by the commissioners of Rising Sun, Maryland on this eleventh day I therefore make a motion that we pass Resolution 2012-13 Charter Amendment, Citizens Recall Provisions.
Second.
Passed and second. Any comments?
I have no further comments on this.
I guess my comment is, I think, I think ultimately this is a positive step, and I want to commend Ms. Osborne for all the work she put into this. We talked and I had some thoughts, but it was clearly something that, you know, you put the lion's share of work into, and I appreciate that. One of the things that I was frankly concerned about when this subject of recall came up in the past is a concern that if it was essentially recall with no strings attached, that anyone could go around with a petition and recall any elected official just because they didn't, you know, they had an agenda or didn't like something that a particular official was doing. What I like about the way this is written is it really does represent what I would call checks and balances. We as elected officials cannot by ourselves remove someone on this board. The residents, the voters cannot by themselves remove one of us. This is predicated on censure by the board, and then it's up to the citizens to follow up on that, which I think creates, as I say, I thought a very good way of, sort of checks and balances between the elected body and the residents. So thank you very much.
I agree with that, and, you know, it really is in the end up to the residents, which is a good thing, but they have something, they have something concrete to base it on.
Right, right. It's just not on the whim, exactly.
Yes.
I am amazed that this, really not surprised, but first of all, I intend to gather some supporting evidence to respond to the citizens' complaint because their comments are based on incorrect information. So hopefully at the next meeting I'll have all things in place to respond to that. I noticed you didn't put the mayor on the back, and I believe all actions are of the mayor and commissioners, so I don't understand why the mayor and commissioners aren't on the back. So...
I believe...
Is that not because it only records the people who vote?
Yeah, on this.
It says the mayor and commissioners. I am currently the mayor of Rising Sun.
Yes, you are.
Yes, but I don't, don't think...
And you've tried valiantly to get rid of them.
No.
And, you know, I don't think you've quite succeeded yet, but...
Not trying to get rid of you. In fact, some of the residents called for my recall not too long ago, so it's not, this isn't just for you, this is for...
Any elected official.
Any elected official.
Well, and actually, if I may follow up on that, actually, interestingly, I'm, Mr. Fisher, I have to say, if I may, that I'm surprised you aren't in favor of this. One of the things that you've repeatedly said to me since you started knocking on my door the minute I, I decided to run for office, was that we need recall in this town. You've said that repeatedly, repeatedly to me. I don't know if you said this to you, you just said we need a recall here in town? Has it come off?
I don't recall specifically talking about recall, but...
Mr. Marion?
He's talked about checks and balances, and I think this provides checks and balances.
Well, I will say that, Mr. Fisher, you have repeatedly brought up recall with me as something you wanted to have happened, so I would think you'd be happy about this.
Well, the only thing he's unhappy about...
I have a very good memory, and I don't ever remember discussing recall with you. Now, if you can produce evidence that I discussed recall with you, that's fine, but I discuss many things. I took you in confidence, and I supported you in the election. You were recommended to me by Sally, and I took Sally's word for it. And I don't understand that why all of a sudden everybody's so dead set against me. I...
Mayor, this isn't necessarily against you. This is a protection, and since we are doing the Charter and ordinance, what would we call that, Calvin? Is that working with the company to get things in more organized, in our ordinances, so that the things that are alike are together and the things that, there are no, all the things that contradict one another within our ordinances are deleted and fixed so that this just becomes part of that charter process that we talked about doing. And you and I talked about...
You tried to get me indicted for, last week...
Pardon me?
You tried to get me indicted last week.
I didn't try to get you indicted.
Well, somebody tried to get me indicted, so I was investigated by a state police investigator, so, you know, I must have somebody...
For what?
And you very conveniently, last week, Mr. Naughton, had your act of censure, you know, to tell us that these things aren't all tied together, it just doesn't make sense to me. So, but that's all I have to say. Anybody wants to talk to me about it, I'll tell you, talk to you, all you want to, but, you know. I was in town hall today, and it was a secret that we were going to make this presentation to Bud, you know. I thought I was a part of the town, mayor and commissioners, but I've been excluded from everything. I'm reduced to writing everything to communicate with the commissioners. I don't think that's the way a government is supposed to operate, but, you know...
Sometimes that's a safety net for both of you.
Any further comment?
Yes.
I said sometimes that's a safety net for both of you.
Okay. Okay. Well, it's fine. So, I'll call for the...
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Guys, have it. But those who passed, okay, we can proceed with the rest of the meeting. The mayor, I had prepared something to say. Some of us went to the annual meeting of the Local Government Insurance Trust. That includes training sessions as well as the business of the insurance trust, which is an association of one hundred and fifty-seven municipalities in the state of Maryland that cooperate in the local government insurance trust. We heard a very cogent presentation on civility. We heard one at Hagerstown on civility. In addition, I attended two workshops, one on the structural government, which I missed in Ocean City, and it was probably the most important workshop that I should have attended. I sure wished I had attended in July. The other workshop I attended was risk management, which all important is not crucial to our situation in Rising Sun. I am still hopeful that we, the mayor and commissioners, can find some way to work together to improve, improving the cost effectiveness, transparency, responsiveness, collaboration, and quality of life in Rising Sun. In the not-too-distant past, we had the reputation for being the nicest town in Cecil County. I believe it can be that way again if we deal with facts rather than twisted version of the truth. of the truth, and I intend to point that out in the next meeting. I call Mr. Osborne, Mr. Naughton, Mr. Marion, and Mr. Bonnberger to work with me in that direction rather than trying to destroy me, and I didn't even know about what this was going on. So with that, we move on. Staff reports. Bonnberger.
Thank you, Bill. In your file, you have some letters that we received from the town attorney today. They're just for your information. They just came in today shortly before four o'clock, so I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that they're in your folder. Hurricane Sandy, we're still in the process, anyone that was involved in the last FEMA reimbursement knows that it's a long, drawn-out process of getting all your paperwork in order to get reimbursed from the federal government for the expenses that were incurred. I will be attending a FEMA meeting later on this week with all the documentation necessary to begin filling out the forms to get the town reimbursed. Town meeting scheduled, just to remind the elected body and the residents, the next scheduled town meeting is for December twenty-fifth. A reminder, obviously, we will not be meeting on the twenty-fifth, so the next town meeting is going to be the workshop on Tuesday, January eighth, I believe, is the date of two thousand and thirteen. The code project, Commissioner Osborne, you alluded to it at the last meeting and a little bit tonight. I know it's going to be part of some of your strategic plan ideas. We are still trying to ascertain all the codes and resolutions that have been passed in recent, or I should say, in the past for the town. Our issue is a lot of those ordinances and codes were not kept in any one location, so it's a process of going through all the town meeting minutes to see whether they reference the adoption of a code, and then seeing if that copy of that actual code is in the document itself. So we're paying a lot of money to have this code project done, so obviously we want to put our best foot forward in making sure that we have all the documentation. Commissioner Osborne, I spoke to you briefly about this today, and I think it's part of what you would like to work on tonight, and I want to say I think it's great that you're taking the initiative about strategic planning. I have here, as I said to you, I've sort of been tracking this list going all the way back to two thousand and eight or nine, and some folks that are past elected officials can remember this list. I was always carrying around like two hundred different projects that we really need to be doing in the town of Rising Sun. We have, you know, every meeting I sort of talk about issues that are facing the town from defective sign ordinances and zoning codes that don't match up right. Over the years, we've made a lot of headway. We're getting really good fiscal policies in place, different rules and procedures. Our audits are much better now as a result of that, but I have essentially a four-page list here that I did a little bit of updating today, broken down into finance-related projects, economic development, planning and zoning-related projects, sewer and water-related projects, permit and plan review under code enforcement, ordinances and resolutions, and other related projects. And this goes back to, quite often I give phone calls to folks who say, I have an issue with something that's going on in my community, and I want the town to do something, but if we don't have the enabling legislation to do that, we'll sort of our hands are tied. And I had one that I received from a resident today, and our society is changing a little bit, obviously, with marketing and sort of boundaries being broken with what different opinions of what's socially correct or not. One of the things we're dealing with is some of our, I want to be careful how I say this, we just have certain businesses that are retail that want to be able to sell anything and everything, and although the items are not adult entertainment related, which we regulate, they are things that we would not want our kids to be seeing up at a cashier. And unfortunately, we are sort of hand-strung here because we don't really have any code language to address it. And this goes back to, it's a good example of how we have all these projects that are here just since I collected since two thousand and seven, and how important it is for us to be able to focus into the future and even start picking away at some of these things because we have some things that are occurring every day, and our residents want us to find answers for that, and that's what part of this list is about. To the resident who raised that issue with me today about the pornographic type of items, we are looking into that. We're trying to find other avenues. It might be as much as just a simple visit with the store owner to say, can you find another place to be selling this? A good example where you get that is the rolled cigarette paper quite often. You know, older generations know that people used to like to roll their own cigarettes, but we also know that in today's world, young adults can use that as a stepping point for rolling marijuana and other type things. So when people see those rolled papers on the counter now, they have more of a tendency to automatically think that it's drug paraphernalia, and it creates a social issue for residents which comes back to the town with an expectation for us to be able to do something about that. And I've experienced this in other communities. There's ways to get around it. We just have to focus on finding those answers now and moving forward with that. So again, I applaud Commissioner Osborne for taking the initiative with the rest of the mayor and commissioners on moving forward with that. Ethics ordinance, at the last town meeting, we officially ratified the ethics ordinance. Mr. Slayball, you might have gotten an email today from the attorney that the reporting forms are done, and the campaign finance statement forms are going to soon to follow. Those forms will go before the ethics board, and they will approve them as sufficient for the intent. It's their world, it's the ethics board's world, and so they're the ones who have to make sure that the forms that are being created meet the intent of the ethics board.
We are meeting on the eighteenth.
Yes.
To finish that project, and at that point, then we will come.
You're meeting with the head of the ethics board?
The entire ethics board is meeting, Mayor.
No, from the state, the head of the state ethics board. The state ethics board is coming here.
Well, I didn't realize, that was not in my email today.
And I think you should meet with them if they do come.
Are they coming on the eighteenth, Mayor?
I don't know that they're coming on.
Well, I think we're meeting on the eighteenth to finalize the forms that are going to be utilized for the town commissioners, for the mayor, and for any authorities.
But there's some question.
And officials that have volunteered to serve the town. So, I have not heard anything about the state, I have not heard anything about the state ethics board coming, you know, or in any, in any way, shape, or form. I know nothing about that other than what you have just said.
Well, it was in the sixth of eight.
I missed it. What do you want?
The janitor had called the.
Well, I think originally the state ethics board was supposed to come up on the sixteenth of December. That had been postponed based on the fact that we had gone ahead and passed the ethics ordinance.
I'll check it out.
Okay.
Okay. But just to let you know that I will be checking it out.
Commissioner Marion, I guess, the Chris's Carol, I think, later, Commissioner Marion can report on that in more detail. Under financial management, the auditor is tentatively scheduled to come out and present the town audit report on the first meeting in January. Sewer plant reimbursements, and what this is, is the financing for the sewer plant has been in place since roughly November of two thousand and ten, and whenever the town pays the interest payments on the loan prior to the sewer plant being built, we will pay the interest on that bridge loan, and then we get reimbursement. And if you recall from other past financial reports, we have basically been carrying the load of that, those interest payments, managing our daily cash flow while also paying the interest off on the loan. Now that the sewer plant is up and running, we have essentially recovered just about all of those interest payments that were due to the town, so that obviously helps our cash flow to be getting reimbursed for that. We're basically on a schedule of paying the contractor every thirty days, and then any expenses that we have, such as attorney fees, accounting fees, paying the construction management, other items like that, we're able to reimburse ourselves on top of that too. So just to let the board and the residents know that's what that financing is for. Under public works, as you have seen, the public works crews have essentially completed the installation of the holiday decorations. As I reported, we're going to try something new with the colored paper. Yes, we've gotten a lot of positive feedback on the way the actual fancy street looks right now. For line painting, I believe it was reported at the last meeting that we were having a company come in and do the yellow line painting in town. That has been done. We have tried to deal with two sections of street that are relatively narrow, or probably better described, is not configured properly to facilitate the passes of traffic when people are parked on the shoulder of the road, and it had to do with the location of the previous yellow lines. So we have tried to rectify that. We do have one particular stretch of road that we want to go back to the state and verify that the line was put in the right location because it did not afford us the ability to achieve the goal that we wanted, which was to make it easy for people to pass on this particular street when there's people parking on the side of the road. We are also waiting for a contractor to get back to us on the seal coating of the town parking lot. About every two years, we try to get the main parking lot seal coating to, obviously, so to last longer, so we won't have such a big expense in the future of replacing that parking lot, because we are starting to get a lot of cracks and sinkholes in the parking lot, so we're trying to stay ahead of it by resealing it. Sidewalk repairs, Commissioner Osborne, we sort of talked about it today in terms of we have some small projects that we were looking to try to get done in this calendar year, and the prices that we are getting back, I agree with you, seem to be higher than what we would like to be paying, and so we might be better off just stabilizing a couple of those areas, and then including it as part of a much larger bid package in the spring so that we can reduce the actual cost.
I agree with that because the price was almost a third more, at least a third more than what we had been charged for similar sidewalk replacements, and it was just out of line with, out of line with the budget for that.
Yes. So moving forward, I guess that's our intention, is to just parlay until.
And we should be putting together that bid here shortly so that we can get that because we are including Mount and Pearl, Mount down to Pug, is that what it is?
That's right.
From Main Street to Pug, and then Pearl from the bank down to the school? Is that what I'm understanding?
From Creed Street down to the intersection, the big intersection of Mounts.
Oh, just to that intersection, not onto the school?
Yes, just to that intersection, not onto the school, no, not at this point. And then Cherry Street, that was only redoing sidewalks on Cherry Street. The public works crews are getting the snowplows and sprovers up and running, making sure that they're ready to go for whatever snow comes.
Would you mind speaking on about the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit sign on Maple Leaf Drive? And I understand from the, the state roads is going to be working on Main Street from Wilson Avenue down to Harrington Lane. Do you know what they're doing?
That has not been indicated yet. We have reached out to them, but I've not done yet.
Because they say it's going to take about a month?
Yes.
You know Harrington Lane and Harrington Drive.
Harrington, okay, Harrington Drive.
As soon as I find out, I'll lay it out.
And that's to start in January, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
But they didn't bother to tell you what they were going to do?
No, at this point, no.
Okay.
Under park and recreation, for the dog park, we're still waiting to get final confirmation from, and the word of positive, we're out of the public review period, but we have, in our conversations with the Actuaro watershed folks, there's been a discussion about whether or not we can get more bang for our buck in combining the efforts with our efforts with the dog park. So that is something that we're still working with them to finalize that, and then we're actually on the side of that, working on our design specs and RFP for the construction of the actual dog activity area, dog park itself. On the sewer and water, just to give you an update on the sewer plant, the progress of the sewer plant in terms of the construction of the new sewer plant is about twenty percent completed, the project's about twenty percent completed. The deep excavations should be done by the end of the year. Dutchland, which is basically a manufacturer, basically has their large tanks, vessels have been installed, they're going to be completed any day now. The oxidation ditch, the construction of the oxidation ditch is scheduled to start in January. The concrete for the filter building has been poured. The headworks building, where all the sewage comes into the plant itself, the grid tank is in, the base slab for the building is going to be poured next week, and the walls will be poured for the headworks to be done by the following week, and then the entire headworks building should be done by the end of January. And the headworks building, obviously, is just where all the raw sewage comes in, and there are components that are installed in there to separate certain components of the sewage grid, mainly grid, and so that's one of the most important portions of the sewer plant, because if you take care of the sewage when it first comes in the plant properly, it cuts down the wear and tear of your pumps and other components in the plant itself, because if you remove some, actually, some harmful things out of the water, they can wear and tear on different components of the sewer plant, so it's important.